Member of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District will hold a first board workshop during the district administration building. And for the purpose of discussing board goals and objectives, today is Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That's my plan. Curtis?
It's okay. I'm gonna spin around the board. I want to first thank all of our buildings and our district administrators for being present tonight. This will be the first time that they are also seeing our draft proposal given to the Board of Education for purposes of our collaborative goals and objectives for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So, in reflection upon the proposal that I prepared to present to the Board of Education, I reflected deeply, and I apologize if my back is anyone, on using the SMART goal process. If you've never been through a SMART goal setting process, obviously it's an acronym for goals that are very specific, goals that can be measured, are achievable in the timeframe that they are specified for, relevant to issues that are surrounding the organization, and are timed down to be completed within that stated parameter. When I thought about what was to be completed for this year, or at least proposed to the Board of Education to be completed for this year, I really reflected on issues that we had already discussed. Things that had come to light, things that had come to surface, with the exception really of the very first proposal on the plan. Speaking with some classroom teachers and administrators that have served in the district for an extended period of time, it has been many, many years since the district has worked on the creation of a strategic plan. The reason that I propose this to the Board of Education this evening is a strategic plan works to build harmony, if you will, between the district and the community itself. It allows you to have over a specified period of time, common goals, common priorities, that again can be measured when you're working on budget setting processes, when you're working on goal setting processes, when you're working on anything related to curriculum, social emotional learning, anything that you want to be included in your strategic plan. Again, it sets a bar for you to work towards over a period of time, and prevents you from deviating off course, if you will. That's not to say that you don't address issues as they arise, but as far as being prepared and having a common understanding between the district and the community itself, what direction that we're headed in. I included two local district strategic plans for the boards to take a look at. Both Newburgh and Warwick go through this process regularly. And I included two lower Hudson districts strategic plans, both in Chapakua and Scarsdale as well. The hyperlinks were included in the proposal as well. If we are to set course for a strategic plan, we could very well finish this by the end of this calendar year to be implemented for the new school year going into twenty-two, twenty-three. A well-crafted strategic plan allows for input from community members, obviously from the Board of Education, students, faculty, staff. Anyone that we want to be included in the process would have the ability to really sit down, voice their concerns, share what they would like to say, and target those specific goals. If we do move forward with this, I would suggest no more than a three-year window right now. Some strategic plans are as long as five years. I think as we're seeing our schools evolve, not just in Goshen but throughout the area, the concerns that we are seeing obviously need to be addressed really more in the short and medium term. I don't think we're in a position yet where we really can look out as long as five years. If we keep going, Lori, I'll go through everything and then be happy to answer any questions at the end. One of the ongoing pieces that I've been discussing both with the board and with the school administration is really taking a look at our district guidance plan. Our current district guidance plan, I will not say that we are out of compliance, but certainly needs to be revisited. New state regulations that were adopted several years ago talk about resources and supports that need to be put in place from K-12. It addresses specific things in terms of staffing. It addresses social emotional support, not just special education mandates, but also for general education students as well. Our current plan that sits on the district website only speaks to grades six through twelve. Again, while I will not say that we are out of compliance, we are staffed within our elementary buildings. There is more that we can do. I believe that in taking a look at that, we could properly staff our buildings. We could, on the secondary level, specifically take a look at the college planning process with our high school staff. I think there's more that we can do there. And I think in collaboration with that, we also can look at the way which we communicate to families through that process as well. Again, if we are able to put a team of individuals together, this gives us an opportunity to have the plan revised, presented to the Board of Education, adopted before the end of this school year, and again in place for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Go to bullet point three, Lori. We also, together with the Board of Education, specifically with our Director of Facilities, need to take a look at our use of facilities policy. It's no hidden secret that the district has initiated a great amount of upgrades to our district facilities. This is of our high school auditorium, our steam labs, our classrooms, air conditioning space in the high school, the new addition of athletic fields. Our current policy and fee schedules probably are not in line with the upgrades that we have made to those facilities. I think looking at other surrounding districts, what they have done in terms of some different options to staggering the fee schedule, to itemizing it for different rooms, different spaces, different parts of the district, is in our best interest to protect the work that we have done, protect that investment, but also still have that good outreach with those community agencies that we want to work with to allow them to come in and be able to use our district facilities. If the Board Policy Committee continues to meet, continues to look at some of the evidence that we have already pulled to look at some of the surrounding districts, I think that we could adopt a new policy prior to the end of the school year to be implemented again in the new school year. Finally, recommendation number four is some of the ongoing work that the Board of Education has already begun. I know that the COVID pandemic certainly heightened the need for us to look at air quality and air circulation within the building. But now that we're preparing, and we will be seeing it later at the regular part of the business meeting, the cost estimate presentation from Land and Girard, we need to make a decision on what direction we are going to head in terms of HVAC work in the district. What is going to transpire is there's many districts in the area that will have received a significant amount of federal funding that will have the option also to be looking at facilities upgrades for HVAC and indoor air quality. In doing so, we will be one amongst many that will be going to Albany for approval for different improvements that we may or may not choose to ask the state to allow us to do. There are time-bound issues that are related to the federal monies with any combination of capital reserves savings that the Board may choose to make. I would recommend that we want to make sure that we begin this process as soon as possible. Again, this is just for the commencement of the project. We need to commit to that decision so that we can stay on track and make sure that we allocate and appropriate those funds for any scope of work that the Board authorizes the administration to move forward with. Again, you'll hear that scope of work and the cost estimates later tonight from Land and Girard Associates. But thinking about the timeframe, we would have to think about when we would present that to the public for their consideration, what combination of both district reserves and or federal funding do we want to put forth to the community? And again, then starting to map out how far out does that proposal take us for a vote, and where do we want that vote to sit? So again, these are four high priority items, again, that over my first few months back here as superintendent, that have certainly been on my desk regularly, that have been brought to my attention regularly. I think this focus in collaboration with the district administration, presenting these items to the Board of Education for adoption and approval, will set us on a good course to be achieved by the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So I'm happy to address questions. Again, if there are other items that we need to consider to be included that are not here besides these four, obviously they're the time for those to be discussed and potentially added, or anything taken off.
Going back in years on guidance, it's one of the biggest conversations of all that we get a lot and have had for years. I think we've improved. Some of the things I thought that worked in the past that maybe because of the pandemic we haven't done is some roundtables that included parents that have been through the process already. We brought in some college administrators, obviously guidance counselors, things like that. So I think that's maybe something we can work in. I think the parent aspect is interesting because they've been through it. There's some tips out there, I think, that parents can share, and parents that guidance coaches can, or even college administrators. I think maybe we can reach down that power of planning process in the eighth grade, ninth grade level. And I think what kids don't understand, and parents understand, is your grade twenty, I was counting early. There's already eighth grade if you take the ninth grade class. I would add that to be included.
And if you look at, I included the Navi on the planning software. When we start to push down into the middle schools, again, you're spot on. Some of the things that we were doing, the pandemic started to address some of those issues. But I think if we're going to take the time and make this one of our goals, and you're hitting one half of really what we need to think about this, we need to look at is how we have the district both staff and program in accordance with what the regulations are. But also second to that, this is a very important part of the college planning process at the secondary level. We need to get back to some of the things that we do well, making sure that we're pushing down to eighth grade, making sure that the college planning process is clearly articulated to families. And whatever we put pen and paper on, or that we put on a screen that parents can read, that we follow through on.
Can I ask a question too? I don't know if we've gotten it in the past, maybe we have and were not aware of it. But there's students that aren't on that track, that are either on vocational track. I don't know if we've really done enough on that track for people. And I know we had talked about the past segue off of this a little bit. But maybe tied into it is some internships. I know we do it on the business side. But I know there's a lot of local people, especially in today's labor environment, that probably, I know we go through BOCs for some of this too. But maybe that's some better cooperation and kind of working.
And that would pull in what we're doing in our business department if we were going to look to expand that. You're absolutely right. Right now, not to be stereotypical, the internship placements that we do are almost holistically on the white collar side. We do not dig in, if you will, to what blue collar locations may be available. It's not a bad thing. It's just the reality of where we are. Considering the additions that we've made in our steam suite, how can we better partner to start to address some of those issues?
And that'd be a privilege just to be sitting here in town to, it's definitely liable to be addressing that local players. Anybody else on guidance or any other comments?
I would just say to your point too, like even when you're talking about kids and exploring college, I like the idea of it even starting younger, like even to me like sixth grade on, so that, you know, you can set those goals early as a student, and just to give you experience and exposure to something that maybe you don't have otherwise. So I like the idea of pushing it down even younger.
When we started, I'll use the example of the world history class that students can loop and take in ninth and tenth grade, the AP class. The department heads and the teachers started to push down at one time in the eighth grades. Ms. Carmen, I'm gonna guess that they haven't done that in the last two, three years. Similar to doing that, we can start to have the counselors partner together to really explore the college planning processes even earlier.
Just to kind of jump off of Jason was saying with the internships. I know some school districts will do senior experience, and some of the different programs have names tied to them, but ultimately it's senior experience. And that allows for the internship in, you know, for blue collar. It might not necessarily be connected to what they want to go to school for, but just something that they have an interest in. So they can explore that, and there's certain curriculum that they can follow to do that.
And models like that, those are much more flexible models. We right now assign a specific teacher a career internship coordinator to make all these placements. Many models like that say to the student, okay, go out and find it. We'll have a teacher coordinator that's here to sign off and review everything with you, but then it's incumbent upon the student. So we'd have to be mindful if we open it up wide, because right now our scope is much more narrow. We maybe hit, how many Jen, for you? Kids that go out on internship, forty, forty-five at most?
I think last year was even higher than, you're probably looking at seventy-three.
Right. Up as we open the additional sections, right. But nevertheless, we don't hit the whole class. We don't have an opportunity for the whole class to go. So somewhere in the middle, probably going to be the sweet spot. If we even, like I said, want to open it even further where everyone has the opportunity, there may be a happy medium to be able to achieve.
I think to your point, maybe that if some of them still do.
Does she have them both, both sections?
Maybe that's to your point, maybe if we went this direction, we're tied out in C and D or type of people through him. But anyway, it's not too much of a long journey. He is his expertise as well. Just a thought.
Do you mind going? Hope you didn't hear.
Now it is. Thank you, Ken.
Just, again, I know I'm repeating myself, forgive me. The one thing I do want to take a look at in this process is really how are we staffing all of our buildings as well? Right now, we do not have a guidance counselor in the K-2 building. Again, talking about appropriate age level development, meeting the spirit and the word of the regulation at the same time. How do we look at best utilizing our staff to make sure that we're not just in compliance, but we're preparing students for the transitions that lie ahead, being, as we say, ready to learn within the buildings? In what way? What might we be able to achieve if we make some of these changes?
Okay. Are we gonna move on to that next one? Facility use. Comment there for me would be that community supported that project. It should be a community use. Especially nonprofits, especially when we want to come in. I think the policy that we should look at be for curve costs, material, you know, things like that that could happen. But I still like to see the use of the facility for nonprofits and community not to charge. I think the college should have a separate policy for maybe anybody outside of the community wants to try to come in. And rates that way.
We've been doing that. At the policy meeting, we've been looking at that. I don't think you've seen the fee schedules for other schools that we've been trying to. We get them too, but we definitely need to sit down as a board and discuss this. Because there's a lot of pros and cons. There's different schedules for nonprofits. We can only open it up to nonprofits if we want to, but custodial use, all that comes into big play. I get what you're saying. We're getting more into this among ourselves. I get what you're saying about the community. It costs us a lot of money to clean it up.
Well, I think community is, I wouldn't charge a community for field usage or something. But if there are the janitors involved, then they got to pay the janitor, obviously.
It's gonna come down to non-Goshen groups and Goshen groups. Obviously, Goshen groups will go first, but we got a lot to talk about.
Yeah. I think it should come down to community.
And if you see the examples, you'll see they are graduated. You know, some of the things that we've been looking at speak to exactly what you've been brought up. It just, for both our Director of Facilities and myself, when we land on our desk, the process needs, and I'm not deferring responsibility. As administration, we will take whatever the Board policy is and implement that policy. The policy needs to be clear for us so that when we get an application on our desk, we know if A, then D. If C, then D. Right now, there's some gray. Well, there's a lot of gray, if you will, and we need to clear that up. And I think looking at some of the examples and looking at that in combination, to your point, that the investment that the community has made, that they have proper access, but at the same time, we can protect the longevity of those facilities at the same time.
Absolutely. Maybe the policy can forward that out. And we can start that discussion.
And that will take time. I've been through this process before. To come to a mutual agreement, this is not easy.
Any other comments on facilities? Got a pitchback plan? I think we'll probably have more comment after the year from Land tonight.
Yeah, just the one thing I'll encourage the board. Yeah, just the one thing I'll encourage the board to keep in mind, regardless of what scope of work the Board charges administration with moving forward with. There's, unless the state changes course, and let's remember, that money is coming from the federal government. And I don't know that the federal government is going to give much leeway on some of the ties that has caused that money being expended. There's going to be a timeliness factor.
Has there been a clarification on the deadline usage?
As of right now, it's a two-year rule, it's a twenty-three, twenty-four rule. So, and I'll ask Matt to share what he came up with from facility planning from Albany tonight as well.
I think that's a key, absolutely.
Not that I want to, and I'm not saying let's rush and do the wrong thing. But let's make sure that we move forward in time with that.
I think the obvious thing is, we'll have to go do all at once, how to be approaching. But I think we'll kind of listen to Matt and your associates tonight and talk about that. Any other comments on our, on our little internet? I'm just going to mention maybe one or two things that we could discuss. And do we want to talk about social emotional role as far as the potential goal objective?
So I, I think that would fit neatly as a bullet point under the guidance plan. Realistically, if we are looking at appropriate staffing within each building and looking at program within each building, that can be codified very clearly in that section.
What I'm seeing and noticing just from observation, in the community and the different programs volunteering, kids are still adjusting with the social interactions and how to interact, not only with their teachers, but with their peers. And maybe I can go back to the, to the buildings somehow. I know we did some ripped up anti-bullying in the past. But maybe we just need to do a niceness training or review or something. I think that's becoming an issue. So I think that could lead to bullying, different things, stuff like that. So maybe, maybe we can kind of re-put, kick that in and get program going again.
So at each level from the beginning of this year, each building has been using resources for time-bound social emotional learning. At the high school, they've been using specific lessons for the castle standards. The middle school brought in NY Coke earlier this year. Where's Dr. Wim? Would be right in front of me. Help fill in for me. GIS has been using.
We just brought in Quaver SCL to start utilizing and we're continuing with our kindness weeks. And we just re-infigured our PBIS to upgrade our All-Star program as well. Got hold in on those behaviors where Steve came.
And Scottstown, several individuals had gone for the Choose Love training last year and have been using components of it. But one of the things that we did here loud and clear during our staff development this day this year was that there was a need for more. And universally, K-12 will be going forward with the Choose Love piece as well. But that had been started during last school year also.
Okay, so we can tie that into guidance?
Yep.
Then a lot, anybody else want to come in? Last piece I had maybe that we want to talk about, we talked about committee, the tech committee, was some type of tech plan. I know there's been, obviously tech is going to be more and more of our educational feature, not less. And as we go through this year, in the first year, we talked about finding efficiencies to increase our investment impact and our training impact. Do you want to try to figure out something there, goal objective, or what are your thoughts?
What, what would the Board want the scope of that to be?
I have no idea.
Well, so my recommendation would be, if we were going to add that, would be to look at, really looking at our device policy. Because I will say, even though we have codified the families, what the device policy is and have them sign off, we maybe have twelve breakages, fifteen breakages come in. And we're still going to have a lot of pushback, to be honest. But I think we've had one family give restitution to the district with a broken device. So if we want to focus purely on the device policy, that may be something we could achieve. I think trying at this point in the year to do much more than the discipline.
Can we, I still hear from parents that they don't have access to child improvement classroom or things like that. Can we do something, I know we did training in the past, Jonathan, we have some Google nights for parents. Maybe we can, A, do that as part of the objective, or B, A and B, we can do it digitally too. Where we can post some things or send them out and make them available. I think that obviously is going to be more and more important in how we move toward the digital life here in school. And now, it was well received with Jonathan's nights that he was doing. Maybe even, maybe we can do that on a visual, post it, make some videos and things like that. So I think if we did go that direction, and maybe you can think about this before we get to final draft, maybe we can do your device section of technology, maybe the training, parent type thing, in there as well.
So one of the things that we have to do every year to submit to New York State is, well, it's every five, John, sorry. Three, every three years is submit our tech plan. That will be due later this year. This will be something that would fit neatly into that. We've at least, we've at least pulled the application and pulled what the framework looks like of what the state is looking at. It's pretty broad, but I think we can take out a few aspects of that to fit in. Obviously, many are not going to be achievable in that short timeframe, but looking at the short timeframe between now and the end of June to at least set a benchmark is reasonable.
Okay. Any other comments on that or support?
How do we, how do we start creating the district strategic plan?
So I'm going to recommend that the Board is in support of this, that for the first time through this process, that we work with a consultant. Consultants, done this many, many times with different districts around the region. Some will move forward with no consultant, but they've been through the process before. What a consultant will do, they will come in and help write the survey that goes out to all the stakeholders. They will meet with the stakeholders, they will take all that information and sew it together in a presentation to the Board of Education, which then allows the Board to work with the administration to really codify what's that planning goal look like. What are your short-term, what are your medium-term, what are your long-term goals? That whole process, it's difficult. It's not easy to get through, because remember, you've taken the voice of your community, you've taken the voice of your students, you've taken the voice of your Board of Education, and you've taken the voice of your staff. And that all has to come together. Some of those items simply aren't going to be included. There are going to be issues where you take some of those issues from the survey, come over here to transportation and you say, this is a department issue, we need to work this out. This doesn't need to be part of our goal. Same thing with the buildings at the same time. Some of them belong just to the buildings, it's something that a parent was upset about, you need to get it worked out. Some of them are really on programmatic and systematic improvements that the district really needs to consider made. I'm going to recommend for the first time going through this in many, many years, that we really need someone to come in and help us do it.
And I'd like to say it's great to see you guys, all the administrators are here. I forgot what that corner looked like so far, it's awesome. But look at these goals, which, you know, the H-doc, all this stuff, everything is green, the strategic plan. Well, what do those guys want? I want to see, I would like to see more input from them, because they're in the buildings all the time. I don't know how to move it in, maybe they create a goal and objective for their building, I don't know. Collaboratively, but I always like to know what they have to say, because they're on the phone.
So I don't want to put the administration on the spot, put the boards.
I just did.
You just heard four to five goals I've articulated to the Board. Anything you want to add, anything that you want to share, anything that was not there, that's literally missing. And you don't allow to speak at all.
You can give that to us.
I mean, if that's something I can just add, that's what the consultant then is going to do, meeting with the stakeholders.
So the strategic plan, strategic plan would meet with the leadership of the teachers, administrators, community, Board, they will meet for that one.
It's hard to kind of get it down to like very specific, because my mind's gone already like building condition survey, like all the bigger global things.
I don't know, I don't know if you had a chance to look at any of those, that's true. It goes from all the way out here, all of a sudden down to something that's managed. It's not an easy process. But, that being said, let's use budget planning as a, as an example with a strategic plan. When you have a strategic plan, the first thing that you do when you start to plan your budget, what are your priorities? You're not all over the place from a building administrator to a department administrative level. It allows them, when they have to submit budget proposals to the central office, to know, hey, yes, well, I have some specific building level goals, I need to be in this lane with my budget this year. Don't bring something completely out of left field.
Any further comments, everybody good?
So I will work then on the update that we spoke about in relation to technology for our next meeting. I'll, I'll get this out, Maury will help me, thank you, Maury, for taking notes. I'll get this out prior to the beginning of our next meeting, if the Board's comfortable with it. We can report with acceptance and adoption for this year for multiple different.
They need to put in super.
And I can put in super.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.